Call a meeting of President and Board of Trustees to order, roll call please.
Trusty Rourke.
Here.
Trusty Peck.
Here.
Trusty Rasich. Trusty Wajowski.
Here.
Trusty Bonucci.
Here.
Trusty Lamb.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
We rise for pleasure.
... to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're seeking a motion to approve the minutes of the committee of the whole workshop held on February eighth.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. That motion carries presidential comments.
I only have one. My deepest condolences to Mary Luderman and her family for the loss of her husband over the weekend. It was a terrible tragedy and to lose one that young, so serious prayers and thoughts are with you. So, that's all I have.
Trustees' comments?
Just a brief trustee comment. I know it's not Public Works Workshop right now, but if you can give like a ten second on the stoplight at 1:26 in Meadow as far as an ETA on activation, that's all. I have a lot of people from the public asking.
Yep. I'll ask Mr. Persons to give the details or Mr. Threewit. They both have much more intimate knowledge than I do on the project.
Just briefly, we were pleased to see that, again, this is an IDOT project. The Village is a partner in this project too as well, but we were pleased to see that the contractor did install the mast arms, the signals, the controller box as well, and the wiring related to that. They're currently working on completing the conduit. I think most of the conduit has been installed between Wall and Drive and Meadow, and today they were installing a handhole. So, we haven't gotten a date certain from the contractor at this point, but they're getting very close to doing testing and bringing it online. So, at the next board meeting or public meeting, I'd be happy to give an update.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Are there any other trustee comments? If not, this will be the time for public comments. If there are no public comments, we'll proceed with the workshop meeting. First item on the agenda is 2016-2017 fiscal year budget overview.
Thank you very much. At this point, actually, I plan on turning this over to Mrs. Pluckham to walk us through the budget presentation. Just a couple of quick highlights. This budget, as it's being presented, is a balanced budget in every respects, the capital budget. Actually, we do continue to set aside some funds to go toward our capital fund reserve, fund balance, and with that, I'll leave the highlights and fund to Mrs. Pluckham and to the directors across the way.
Thank you. As the board is well aware, we've been talking budget since, actually, September. I figured it'd be good to take a little walk backwards in time to see where we've been and where we're at today. So, as the board recalls, back at the end of September, we started with our five-year capital plan, which is something we do on an annual basis to update that, that plan and incorporate it within the next year's upcoming budget, make sure things are sound, and we've got the projects based on the board's policy and direction. Consistent with that, October third, we had the strategic planning session update that the board had held, and it helped staff get direction on budgetary items that needed to be included in this next fiscal year budget, make sure we're appropriating the funds as necessary based on, again, policy and direction from the board. October fifth was the audit presentation for last fiscal year, 2015, and that's really the jumpstart of the budget season for fiscal '16-'17. We use that guide as well as the current fiscal year to start compiling our numbers for fiscal '17, which is what we're looking at tonight. Then, middle of October through tonight, we've been talking budget, starting with our overview and then each division along the way, including with that is our tax levy process, which happens around November. And then today, what you're seeing is the overall picture amongst all funds in one packet, and I can tell you that since we've met and presented all of these budgets, there has been no major substitute changes as far as dollars are concerned. In the general fund, we're talking on the expense side, an increase of just over $360,000 in expenditures, and what that includes are, based on the board's discussions in the past meetings, three new hires, which are two patrol officers within the police operations division and an economic development specialist within the planning division. Some of the decreases that we found is when we were looking at the budget items was some reductions as it relates to overtime within the police department, based on the new hires that'll eventually come on board throughout the year, as well as a reduction in our salt purchase cost because we do have salt available from this fiscal year as well. The amount that we'll need to purchase next fiscal year will be reduced, and that was the really larger items that have changed since the board has last seen this document. So, I wanted to highlight those globally. We'll go through them in a little more detail and be happy to answer questions along the way. The other thing we did look at, as we were looking at the numbers, was the conservative approach that we're taking in regards to the state of Illinois and their position. And at this point, as you're aware, nothing has changed as it relates to current revenues that the village is receiving from the state of Illinois, i.e. income tax. That's the one that we've been watching quite closely. In fact, we've been receiving above our revenue estimates, which was expected because we did not receive any cuts within the income tax revenues. So, as we were looking at those, some of the adjustments that were made for next year were reflective of current year situations, but also specifically to income tax. There's a 20% reduction within next year's estimates in the event that the state has some sort of issue and brings down some sort of compliance or mandate or anything as far as reduction of any sort of revenues within next year's fiscal year of the village here. So, we still took a conservative approach, and within the numbers, you should see that as, as we move along within the documents. What's on the screen right now is all funds, just on the revenue side. I thought that was important to highlight. Then this includes what I call miscellaneous funds, so it would include the pension fund, it would include the TIF fund, it would include every fund under the village's umbrella. And you'll see within this, it's just about $55 million, but the primary sources of revenue across all funds relate to the state of Illinois taxes as well as charges for services, and that is related to refuse pickup as well as water and sewer charges. So, you can see why that number would be one of the higher numbers in our revenue streams. Same thing on the expense side, as far as looking at next fiscal year. This is all funds for the expenses that's proposed for the next fiscal year, just under $52 million. You'll see that's a little bit less than the revenue side, and that's primarily because the police pension fund has a surplus of just over $2 million within the current proposed budget, and that's expected. The intent is not to spend all of police pension fund revenues, it's to extend it out from year to year to help accumulate the reserves necessary for pension payouts in the future. So, 52, just under, just under $53 million in expenditures, and primarily contractual services is pretty much the, the main contributor of where most of our expenses go. Now, that is primarily because on the water and sewer side, water purchase has a lot to do with this, as well as our other refuse collection. You'll see a little difference of percentages when we get into the corporate fund and how those are different. Salary and benefits tend to be a little bit higher on that end. So, moving into general fund, here's the proposed budget. This should look familiar from when we saw it the last time, and again, on the revenue side, the, the main changes was just over $300,000. You'll see within the state of Illinois taxes, those have changed slightly, as well as license and permits, not primarily a lot. We just, the last time we looked at the revenues was through October, which was halfway through this current fiscal year. Since then, we've had a few more months to put under our belt and been able to true those numbers up, as well as look at the income tax revenues and get those a little bit more in line with what we're seeing consistently for this fiscal year. And again, on the expenditure side, we talked through the primary changes on those in regards to staffing. Another visual for general fund, this is the expenditure side. As we just talked about, the global picture, salary and wages and benefits are the key contributors to our expenditures just within the corporate fund. This is the operations area of the village, not including water and sewer, and that's very consistent with what you'll see across many municipalities as far as where the expenses go. And before I move to water and sewer, in your packet, you have the detail for the general fund, revenue expenditures in each division. I'd be willing, happy to answer any questions in regards to any of the specifics. I wasn't certain. We've gone through this in great detail in the past few months. If there's any questions after reviewing the material or if anything comes up throughout the presentation, I'd be happy to go over it. I've highlighted mainly everything that's changed in here. The only other item that we didn't speak to specifically is just the legislative consultant contract. That was included as well within the legislative portion of the operations, the corporate, corporate fund. Other than that, again, $300,000 change roughly on, on the expenditure side, but on general fund, I'd be happy to answer the questions now or we can reserve them to the end.
I had a question on the, the new hires. The 1.1 million for the police pension that we've upped the contribution, does that include their proposed salaries because they're not yet hired yet, or will that have to be adjusted once they're hired and whatever the pay rate's going to be determined at?
Right. The actuarial will do their calculation based on the past year. Basically, it's a look back. We do provide them information when we do receive new hires. So, for example, if we hire new officers at the very last month of the fiscal year that they're looking at, they will take that into consideration, but because they're so new, the calculation is very minor at the time that they do their actuarial assessment. So, they will get incorporated within the calculations, but wasn't necessary for what is required from a contribution perspective today.
The largest reason for the change in, in what that contribution is to the pension fund has to do with how the calculations were made for mortuary schedules.
Mortality rates.
Mortality rates. There were some changes in, in how those were to be calculated and figured out, and with that, it did require us to put in an additional, about $200,000.
But the new, the new hires wouldn't really be calculated in until next year's?
Correct.
Yeah, and even then, it'll be a minimal amount to contribute for the current year that we're talking about because their impact is very minimal at this point. Their age and their years of service don't constitute much of an increase in the contribution that's necessary. The other thing to keep in mind with pension, the board's policy has been to contribute 100%, towards 100% funding of the pension fund. We've been consistent. The state's requirement is 80% or 90% funded, I believe. So, the calculation that the state is requiring versus what we get from our actuarial is different, only because we, we calculate at that 100% funding level.
Couple of questions, these to refuse hauler. We've been talking about picking up electronic hazardous waste and so on. I don't think that's in here, is it?
It's not at this point, and it would offset on the revenue side as well, so if we, if there was something.
Make sure how that was being covered, so. I had another. Oh, the phone system, where does that show up that we just authorized?
The phone system was, was within this year's budget under capital.
Okay, so it doesn't need to be here. That's fine. Good.
I had a couple of brief statements on, as far as the general fund, the corporate fund. There's a lot of different items here that our department heads put together, bring it to the village administrator, go over different needs and wants of each department, who gets what and when, obviously. Some things are prioritized, some things are sometimes tabled to another fiscal year. But what I see happening is, overall, we have a very, what's what I'm looking for? A hands-off board as far as we don't micromanage staff and get involved in day-to-day stuff and say, you know, how come, you know, the trucks are white instead of this color? And when it comes to the budget, though, this is the one time where the board really essentially approves or disapproves a budget and asks staff, please go back and re-prioritize different line items that we may or may not feel are most important for this coming fiscal year. Something that I see happening is, we have a committee of the whole meeting coming up in the near future about special events and different organizations, and it's my opinion that there may be a limitation on the ability to use TIF funds to essentially subsidize some of the manpower that's used to make sure these events take place safely. We've had the chief to discuss different numbers. It's about $100,000 a year that it's costing. Obviously, it's important, otherwise it wouldn't, it wouldn't have been brought up. So, I guess, one other thing to point out too, to the board members that may or may not have gone over, you know, budgets in the past, a lot of these different line items have account numbers that Tracy could probably attest to. Big, long account numbers that we don't see and really want nothing to do with on a daily basis. And I guess what I want to ask the board is, do we want to prioritize, essentially set aside within the corporate fund, okay, the general fund, X amount of dollars that we know will be set aside in an account that can be debited, okay, when there is a special event that's credited to, you know, the chief's account or Allen's, if we do need to provide manpower for a special event? What I essentially see happening is, we have a sequence of events going on. We're going to have a committee of the whole meeting at a later date after possibly the budget is approved, where it will be too late to set aside that money and say, for the next fiscal year, we're going to have $80,000 set aside for the, for Plainfield Fest or for another, you know, the homecoming parade. And if TIF funds aren't available, we as a board will be forced to tell those organizations, you know, you're going to have to contribute X amount of dollars, and we have to decide who's going to contribute what, okay, based on whatever metrics that staff proposes and we as a board agree on. So, tonight is our night to give staff direction and say, we like everything that's in here as is, which I do think staff did a great job of putting everything together. It takes a lot of time. In addition, we can also direct staff and say, let's create an account in the corporate fund that we know won't be limited as, in certain ways, the TIF fund may be limited to fund events such as Plainfield Fest in the future, and have X amount of dollars in that fund, whether it's $50,000, $80,000. I think chief, you had mentioned, it was about $100,000 we're spending a year on these events. So, this is our opportunity to do it now versus to tell staff in three months, hey, we want to fund these through the corporate, but the money's not there. We voted on a different budget. So, really, tonight is the night, if we want to, as a board, come together and say, we don't want to take away any of the subsidies that we have, this is our opportunity to say, we're going to do this now and direct staff to, you know, go through the budget and make a few different changes and bring it back to us before it's finalized. So, that's the one thing I wanted to get off my chest tonight and see where the rest of the trustees and the mayor are on that issue. Or, we can leave it as is, and I'll support the board and their decision.
One of the thoughts that I have, as trustee Peck was talking about this, is because we're, we're near the fiscal year end, there's an opportunity that the board, should the board look at something such as, specific as that? When we look at our performance for this fiscal year, if there's fund balance availability, which currently the fund balance is at 40% for our corporate fund, there's an opportunity for staff to reserve certain fund balances for purposes such as special events. It's something we can consider if we get to a point that, or we can even revise or amend the budget at a later date after it's approved to include a line item specific to that. But there's a couple of different ways that it can be approached. Something similar to that would be if we received, as an example, donations for a specific project within the audit, we will recognize that and we will reserve those funds for that purpose. So, based on our fund balance policy, that's something, there's different levels of commitments of fund balance, that's something the board could consider if staff felt that there was not enough funding within the current fiscal budget to do so. I feel between where we're at in the time, if something were to come up in the next couple of months, between being able to amend the next year's budget or having funds reserved based on this current audit, that could be a possibility if the board's inclined.
Tracy, let me ask you, though, would it be possible to create an account in the corporate fund as far as having that be the account that holds money for, for special events, then do an internal transfer from fund balance if and when staff feels that that's necessary or the board goes over the fund balance?
We could. A lot of the expenses are staff-related, and so within our accounting system, we highlight those of certain projects, so we can run reports and drive right into what each employee is working on and then get a dollar figure from that. So, internally, we can do that. There's nothing to say that we couldn't do something to have a specific account, per se. There's a couple of different ways you can, you can go at it.
I guess the reason why I'm proposing that specific account is so we can keep track of exactly how much money is being then debited out of that account and credited to others that, you know, essentially keeps track of the money that we're spending. So, we don't have a department head saying, you know what, I'm running out of funds and this because you're using it for special events. We know exactly what we're pulling out of this special event fund.
The nice thing is, is currently we have, I say nice thing, the reality is, is we have funds budgeted currently in the overtime costs in both the streets department and in the police department for those specific needs. That's why, as Mrs. Pluckham mentioned earlier, that there was a cut in the overtime budget toward the police department. It truly didn't seem like a very large cut with the new hires, largely because a good portion of the funds out of that are used for special events. So, it isn't necessarily something that you would have to carve out of this particular budget to be able to accomplish that, because we do already account for it. The expense, as we had presented to the board, you know, the previous report, that we will have a committee of the whole on back, later on in, in April, those expenses are still accounted for within this proposed budget and also in the current fiscal year budget. The, the question comes to more so, should there be a charge for those particular events to those groups to recognize that there is an expenditure, a direct expenditure? So, how we book it isn't necessarily, it can be booked a number of different ways, I guess is what I'm getting at, but it is already accounted for in what we have going on here. By all means, humbly, and again, this is just the purest accountant in me, is that when you start doing that, it becomes a lot harder for us all to, to manage our funds because we're, we have a, basically, we have a bucket over here, and that bucket can't be used over in this other area here, and it becomes a little bit more interesting and you end up with a lot more special use-looking things within a budget. And if you recall, and I'm not picking on previous administrations, but we did kind of have that here, and so we have kind of moved away into something a little bit more global in, in our presentation on, on the budget, so.
Is there something the board can do this evening to give staff direction on this budget? As far as, if we were to make zero changes at a later date, when we do have the committee of the whole discussion about possibly doing charges, if we were to decide, we're going to leave everything as is, completely funded and subsidized by the village, will this budget that's proposed be able to handle that out of the corporate fund?
Yes.
If there's not the ability to pull it out of TIF?
Yes.
Then, I'm happy. Okay. Thank you. That works.
Mr. Pluckham, how hard is it to amend the budget if, say, we have a committee, a committee of the whole meeting and we decide to charge X for this, for this special event? Is it, is it hard at all to amend it?
Not at all.
So, it'd probably be better to wait, maybe until?
Yeah.
I mean, like, when I look at a budget, I look at the, the total dollar value and I say, okay, it's well within the reasonable means and it'll make the village work. However, there may be purchases in that budget that are over $5,000 that I will say no to next year. This kind of fits in the same thing. We haven't yet decided on the special events cost or how we're going to charge or who or what, and I don't know if it's premature to do special line items yet or to maybe wait. If it's not that hard to amend it, I don't know how hard it would be to make a separate account after we've decided what we're going to do, if we're going to do anything.
It's not difficult at all, and, and actually, within the way the budget is handled, a line item can be added without even amending the budget, as long as the total general fund doesn't go over budget as a whole. So, for instance, if treats, if streets division is over budget because we had a bad snow year one year by $300,000, but if our corporate fund was still in, under budget as a total, there's no, there's no audit issue with that. We can add a line and add the expenditure based on the direction of the board. So, if there's direction to include a specific expenditure relating to special events, we can do that, and then it's our job to monitor the budget and make sure that there's no overages or potential overages, or we can amend the budget as well to include that increase in expenditure. You can do it either way, but as far as, to your original question, it's not challenging to, to amend the budget. It just comes back to the board for approval.
Okay, so it would be possible, I mean, you said the, Mr. Murphy said the police overtime budget is counting on, worst-case scenario, not including the two new hires, and that could be moved later on if the, the board was to decide to do a special events. They could take that allocated money in the police overtime budget and perhaps move it to an account for special events. Okay, great. Thank you.
I guess trustee Wajowski, why I brought this up is I didn't want us to put staff in a position where they did not make some cuts now perhaps in order to make room for that money to be available for special events and then have us go over budget. I want to make sure that that money was going to be there if we, as a board, decide we were going to still fully fund the special events, because now would be the time for staff to maybe go back and make a couple of cuts if they needed to before we finalized it. So, it sounds like we're on the right track here. We don't have to actually go back and sweep any funds out of any projects, and that, we should be okay then.
That's why I asked about the, the overtime, at least for the, the, the police overtime for the, and I'm sure the streets overtime is the same, right? All their, all their, all costs for all events are included, worst-case scenario, so we can always go back and change things around later. Okay.
I think too, we had a meeting, and I don't know if you were there, trustee Peck, but there was a comment made that we weren't probably going to fund completely all the events either. They're going to be reviewed individually, and some of those that were reported, and I think there was 30, there was a number of them that aren't even going to occur this year. So, that will be lessening the cost too. But we are going to review the cost factor for each event, and it's entirely possible they could be billed for street and/or police.
And it would be up to the board then to set that policy, mayor?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I like what we're doing, because I think we have good control. We look at the overall expenses and it's wrapped in there. I think what the chief does with his organizations, we get a report on all these special events. It outlines what the cost is. Some of the costs don't exist. PMA is a calculated cost. It's not out of our pocket. Public Works doesn't submit any cost for it, so I'm uncomfortable with the idea of trying to put aside some money, because then you have to take it out of your budget and put it in this other budget because, you know, it goes back and forth, and I think it complicates things. It's worked right now. We just have to be careful. I would suggest that we take a look and see if we can reduce the cost by reducing the amount of manpower that's associated with some of them. We've talked about that, I think, as we go through the year, and maybe we'll bring it up in the workshop too, can we reduce it without causing any damage to the public safety, which is, I think, the issue? So, let's maybe explore that, and maybe that'll be some ways of saving money. But the system right now, I think, works, as far as I'm concerned. It's, the money's there, we keep track of it, we hear about it. If we're upset about it, we can take some action to make sure it doesn't happen again next time, but so far, we've been riding along with it, and I think I'm comfortable with that.
I'm sorry, I had a question on the, the capital improvement fund as it relates really to the streets and the roadway improvements. So, there's a number of different line items in that.
I'm going to cut you, I'm going to cut you short. We're going to continue in corporate and we'll get.
And general fund so far.
Ellen has a two-hour presentation. But if there's any other questions that come up with corporate along the way, just feel free to, to interrupt. Water and sewer fund, the change since the board's last seen it has been $12,500. So, there really has been no changes within water and sewer. It was investment income and a very $10,000 in the state of Illinois taxes. There really wasn't an adjustment on the revenue side at all. Expenditures minus some benefit tweaking based on a position being empty and having to fill that. We wanted to make sure we had the benefits in, in the right place. So, really, there's been no changes since the last time the board has seen this. Ellen and his staff did the presentation. I'd be happy to go over any of the detail that you have or any questions that you might have had since the last time we met and tonight, and when you looked at it again. But otherwise, this is basically status quo from the last time it was here.
Do have a question about the, we, again, are not putting depreciation in, so we're not totally recovering or covering all the costs, but we're transferring, transfer to debt service. to debt service. The past years, it's been about $125,000. This year, or next year, we're projecting $242,000, and we do that two or three different places. What's the rationale behind that instead of, I assume that money is available, could go against debt or against depreciation?
The transfers are increasing by roughly $500,000 this fiscal year, the proposed fiscal year, and that is because the village as a whole has a level debt service payment that is made from year to year. What happened was is one of the debt issues were paid off, and then the Water and Sewer Fund took on a little bit more debt to keep the level debt service the same. The transfers you see go to the debt service fund, and it's a portion of the bond issue that Water and Sewer is responsible for paying. So you'll see a line item for debt service, and that's truly Water and Sewer only debt, the revenue bonds, for example, and then you'll see transfers within Water as well as Sewer to help fund the payment for the debt service in the debt service fund, which is comprised of more than just Water and Sewer payments. The debt that was issued was through corporate or capital fund as well. So that's why there's a transfer instead of a debt service payment, if that makes sense. Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, Water took a little higher.
But this is self-contained, Water and Sewer is self-contained situation, so it's balanced. We're not losing any money. We're not making money.
Right.
Covering our costs, which is all that we're really, have asked you to do, so.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, can I maybe go back? So is the corporate fund the same as the general fund?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Sorry. So you had made reference earlier when we started about the reduction, I think, in the Salton and also the police overtime. But help me understand, it looks, I guess I'm just not, so if you look at the police overtime salary, 2016 adopted versus 2017, it shows actually a slight increase. So when you look at a decrease, what, am I looking at the wrong columns? Is that the problem?
Which page? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, page 15?
15.
At the top, I think it, I think that's police, right, overtime?
Right, it's police, yeah.
Right.
I'm looking at adopted 16 versus proposed 17. Is that the wrong columns of review?
Adopted 16 for, it's for police operations overtime is at 391,500. We're trending closer to 370,000. We're proposing to budget 380,000, slightly higher, only because we will not bring those two new hires on right away, and wanted to make sure that, if you look at the past, we think we're pretty conservative on their overtime expenditures, but didn't want to go too low, just in case the new hires take a little longer to get on board. Because they'll have to, they'll have to go through training as well with, on the Street.
So I guess.
But to answer your question that you were asking, yes, that is where the yeoman's share of the overtime costs for the special events for the Police Department would also be charged.
So it goes back to the other issue then? So it's really not a patrol issue. It's really the special event type thing?
It's a combination of both.
Right, and what was proposed when this was presented last, last year was 391.5, it was 391,500. So when the board saw this line item last, it was reduced from 391.5 to 380,000.
I guess it's just people maybe listen. You would think maybe with hiring two additional officers, we might be able to get it down a little bit more. That's my only thought when I first read or saw that part of it, that's all. But if it goes more to the special events, then it's really not the patrol part of it.
Well, not only that.
We still do hope and expect that we'll see some further leveling on that number in future years. As Mrs. Plekka mentioned, the two new hires really won't be on the Street until much later on in the year, and so as a result, we won't see savings on our overtime until they're fully through their training and they have their FTO, and they're out on their own on the Street. So that will take a good portion of the year.
Thank you.
How much was the, refresh my memory, the special events overtime last year for the police? Was that about 100 total?
I believe it was close to 100,000.
So a third of the budget is all on, a third of Chief Conepex's budget is, overtime is all on special events. So I guess in reality, we can, we can reduce that or move that later after we decide what we're going to do with the special events in the future.
It's closer to a quarter of the overtime costs, yeah.
I'm sorry, just for knowledge, at page 18, that's the same. It talks about Division 55 Police Special Activities. What is, what is a police special activity? What does that include?
I'm sorry, what page is that again?
I'm sorry, page 18 of the, yeah, the general. So it says Division, and it says 55 Police Special Activities. I was just curious as to what that might.
I believe that's what we receive related, in relation to staffing time for, it's not, it's contractual, we receive revenue based on that. It's, let's say Thanksgiving.
Those would be things associated with working for the school district for, like, football games, things like that, where we do get reimbursed for those activities, but we do have to pay upfront for them.
Right, like Black Friday is what comes to mind when, when some of the retailers request to have police presence. They pay for those services.
Like, I guess.
That's where that gets budgeted.
Thank you.
All right, anything on Water and Sewer? We will move, we always come back. We'll move to Ms. Laney's Funds, identical to what we spoke to last time the board saw this. There have been no changes within any of the budgets listed on the screen. The backup you should have in your packet, yes, you have in your packet as well. If there's any questions relating to them, be happy to take them, but again, no changes within any of these budgets listed. And I saved the best for last, like I said. Capital Improvement, there's a screenshot of the proposed budget. I know Alan and his staff presented the five-year plan back in late September. Talked about which projects were going to be looked at in the next five years, but this is really going to now focus on next fiscal year. And with that, I'd be happy to turn it over to Alan and Scott, and they can go through their presentation.
And we really only have a handful of slides and a few comments to make, too, as well, so, but feel free to ask questions along the way or at the end. We are really pleased. It's an exciting year for the Village of Plainfield because, as Tracy had noted in her budget memo, we have $3.5 million of grant money that's been committed to projects within the village, which is great because at this time, it's a real competitive process, and it's always nice to have a federal grant as opposed to a state grant at this point. So that money is committed and anticipated to be spent in this coming year's budget. There's an additional $1 million that's related to the projects that I'll talk about in grant money that's approved, that's anticipated to be used in 2017, 18, and then we're actually going to make application to the Will County Transportation Committee for an additional $2 million of federal funding out of that same source, the Surface Transportation Funds, the STP funds. So it's exciting that we've got some great grant opportunities here, and it's reflected in the budget, and it saves the local taxpayers money here, too, as well.
Let me just make sure I understand.
Sure.
The, there's some new grants coming along. You say they're already in the budget, even though we don't have them?
Yes, they, they've already been approved by the Transportation Committee.
They've been approved, okay.
Yes.
I thought you were talking about some other things that we are applying for now and may get Will County, and so that's not in there, is it?
It's, it's not in this here, but we are applying for an additional $2 million.
I want to congratulate you guys for being conservative and not putting in grants that you don't actually have, and you are putting in only ones that you actually know you're going to get. So that's all, what I wanted to make, make sure I knew that right.
That's, that's correct, and to Mrs. Plekka's point earlier, if we need to amend the budget six months down the road where there's additional grant funding that's going to be received, I'm sure the board would be favorable to that, too, as well. So, and then there are some other opportunities, too, as well, just to dovetail on this. CMT, Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly, our engineering firm that's working on the design plans for 143rd Street Extension, has a meeting this week with staff, with Chambers, Collin, and Hartwell, our group, our professional group out in Washington, to talk about the Tiger Grant application, which is even larger magnitude scale, and now we are really dealing with the federal side of it, too, as well. So not to cut the state out of the process, but, you know, we, we have needs in this community, and we want to see these projects continue to move forward, and we'll always try and do our best to present those opportunities to the board for the future. So we thank you for your support. So with that, I'll talk about a couple of projects. 127th Street, this is a great project because it was only a couple of years ago that we met with the residents out there that were concerned about this project. We had told them that we would plug that into the five-year plan, and we were able to, actually able to advance this program with the $2 million grant for this program. We anticipate 1.5 million will be expended. To give the public an update, and I know the board's already aware, that the Phase One has been completed and approved. The Phase Two, which is all of the design work and specifications, is just about 90% complete, and by the middle of March, less than a month from now, we'll make our what's called near-final submittal to IDOT into the Federal Highway Administration for approval. So it's an exciting time because it means that we are very, very close to bidding this project. This roadway is, needs this improvement, and it'll be great to apply that $2 million grant money to this program, too, as well. We did have a public meeting. We received several written comments and just some really very positive comments that we were able to pass on to the Federal Highway Administration, and they gave us the green, continued to give us a green light at every meeting that we have with them. So we're pleased with the progress on this. The next slide is our big project here, 143rd Street, and I touched on that a little bit, and we, you know, appreciate the partnership between our new firm out in Washington DC and with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly, and the support of the board. This project has a $2 million grant for engineering, which we would like to grow that to a $4 million grant to help out with some of the other items, to get it even closer to be, to going under construction, and then ultimately a Tiger Grant potentially to fund the construction. So that's a plan at this point. We'll keep the board apprised. Phase One has been approved. Phase Two, we're well into, into the process, and we'll have Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly come back and give the board an update as to how we're doing with this project. But we're pleased that it is moving forward. Fort Beggs Street Lighting, we talked about this, just a little bit smaller project, but it's a nice partnership with the school district. The school district has committed to pay for half of the construction of the installation of the lights. At the next board meeting or at the first board meeting in March, we'll bring forward an intergovernmental agreement that talks about sharing the costs for this project. We estimate that it'll be about $220,000, and we would split that down the middle with the school district. So that's a nice improvement for the future. It's, we went from the, you know, the, one of the biggest scale projects to one of our smaller scale projects, but it shows the intergovernmental cooperation that we have with the other agencies within the community. Settlers Park Refresh and the Veterans Improvements, that is within the budget, too, as well. This is currently out for bid. We're going to open bids in two weeks, in less than two weeks, and this includes not only the resetting of pavers, the replacement of some of the limestone work and tuck pointing that needs to be done out there, too, as well. Landscaping, there are some electrical issues and upgrades that need to take place, and then last but not least, the improvement of the entire Veterans Plaza that we have, which will include hardscape and landscape improvements for each one of the monuments, also lighting, which is needed out there, too, as well, and it's really going to dress up the site and make it look very, very nice. We're also going to do a little reforestation with all the, the ash trees that have been lost within, around this property and within Settlers Park, too, as well, and some other paving improvements out there which are needed. So you'll see that bid either the first or second meeting in March, and the Veterans Plaza will be completed before Memorial Day, and that's part of the contract, too, as well. So I wanted to make the board aware of that, make the public aware of that, that that will be completed before Memorial Day.
But not much before Memorial Day, correct?
It is, the completion is, is, it is a date certain completion, two weeks before Memorial Day, landscaping, hardscape, electrical work, everything, you know, on that part of the site will be completed before Memorial Day.
But that's just the part for around the Veterans Memorial. The rest of the work is going to take on a much longer period of time. More than likely, we know that we have to work around and push up against some of the community events that are planned there, the concerts in the park and the movies in the park. You'll notice that the schedule for those are a little bit later than we've done them in the past, only because we're trying to give ourselves as big a window as we possibly can. But again, that's part of the reason why we've gone out to bids already, is that we wanted to get the Veterans Memorial Area done in time so that we can actually celebrate Memorial Day with the parade there.
That's correct. And there are some landscaping improvements that will be done in the fall, you know, to clarify with that, too, as well, that some of the trees are more conducive to fall planting as opposed to the spring planting, too. So we'll move on to the next one, too. The bicycle pedestrian improvements, this is one of the big items on the strategic plan for the village, and we recognize that, and we've made great strides in the past couple of years in this, making connections, new interconnections, too, as well. This is not on the slide, but I'm happy to report that the Canadian National did drop off some equipment at 135th Street where the pedestrian crossing is to occur. Some of the conduit and electrical work has been completed early this morning. I didn't see a crew, this is not on the, not on the script, but I didn't see a crew, but I was happy to see that the equipment was actually there. So we are getting very close. This is actually, though, 248th and 127th Street. Edwards has been a great partner in installing sidewalk in that area. We need to complete the crossing at that location and extend some of the bike path and just continue on that and with that improvement, too, as well. And then with the next slide, I think we have several other locations. Route 30 is going to be a huge improvement, and I don't want this to throw the board or the public, we didn't budget money within Route 30, quote unquote, for this year, because we did pay half of our proportionate share to the state last year, and then we'll pay the other half after the project's completed. So there will be some funding that will have to be set aside for the future. We'll, the proper term is, if it's reserved, for the future for that, but I didn't want that to throw anyone to see, to say that, hey, we didn't budget money for Route 30. The Route 30 will continue to, to be improved, and we're going to, it's going to be great to have the pedestrian improvements, safe pedestrian crossings at each one of the intersections, and just a great improvement for the community. Also, there are a few other miscellaneous ones. I won't go through each one, but we do still, we're awaiting the study results for 135th Street and Route 59. That's an area where we'd like to create some pedestrian improvements, partner with IDOT 2 as well, and once we get that data and study, we'll bring that back to the board. The, I think this is just about the last slide that we have. Indian Boundary, we've got a creek that runs through there and some older corrugated metal pipes for, two of them, actually, for culvert, and it does, they're sizable, and they're in need of replacement. And I have to give Mr. Threewitt quite a bit of credit here in helping us and working through the grant program because we are paying 20% of the Phase One, which is a very small cost, but the federal side of it, they're actually paying 100% for the Phase Two and for the construction as well. So out of that $3.5 million, $500,000 is going towards this project. That's $500,000 grant is going towards this project. So as soon as we're done with the Phase One and we get into the Phase Two, everything that we expend is reimbursable for this project, and so it is a good testament to our certified bridge inspector here to my left. So I have to thank him for that.
This is where the $616,000 in the budget shows up, that's that.
Yes, and that, you know, 16.
A lot of that money back, is what you're saying.
Exactly, yes. It's budgeted as an expenditure for this project, but you'll also see that there's a $500,000 grant revenue budgeted for that, too, as well. And last but not least, oh, the pavement condition index, the PCI, as the board will recall, in 2011, we hired a firm. It was approximately $100,000, but what this firm did with their sophisticated equipment, would, they drove every mile of the equipment would, they drove every mile of the village's streets, which is approximately 400 lane miles of streets. And in that process, they videotaped, for lack of a better term, it's digital, all the roadways. And then they have this sophisticated computer equipment that will measure cracks, it will measure potholes, it will measure deviations in the level of the pavement, curb conditions, things of that nature, and it'll give the pavement a rating score. So every segment of roadway within the community has a pavement score. So our average pavement score, it goes from one to a hundred and hundred is, is as good as it can get. Our average pavement score was seventy-nine. And we had a discussion with the board about funding levels because we were really only funding about half of the program that we needed to keep up with pavement resurfacing. And thankfully, with the support of the mayor and the board, we were able to double that funding source, half through MFT, half through the corporate account. And that our calculated pavement score is about an eighty today. So we're five years out. And that's calculated based on the roadways that have been resurfaced and the condition reports that we had gotten five years ago. What we've included in the budget is a proposal to have a company come out and we'll bid it. But to have a company come out and do this similar work that IMS did, to evaluate the pavement condition today or this summer and help give us guidance for the next five years. Because what the, the survey and the study did in the past in 2011 gave us good guidance for the resurfacing and reconstruction that occurred over the past five years. And we've got a couple exhibits out here for the public and for the board. We also, these, we publish these too along the way as needed and post them on the website at times. If people request it or provide them too as well. So we would like to update that and that did fit within the budget as far as it was, it was feasible to put that in the budget and make it work. If you'll look at page 3.4, you'll see the other projects that I didn't mention too as well. There's only a handful of, of other things. We have an LED streetlight replacement program that we are continuing and just some other programs within that. I think I hit just about, I hit all the big ones. So if you have any other questions about any of the other projects that are on that sheet or within capital in general, I'll be happy to answer them. But we're really excited about this construction season coming up and the improvements that'll be completed within the village.
Do you expect any cost overruns on the ash bore, the emeralder ash bore costs? I know it looks like in, the adopted budget for sixteen was 200,000 and the estimated was 325. Do you think it'll be near the same or less or more, depending on how many trees we have left?
Ultimately, it's going to taper off because we did remove almost 2,000 trees this past year and, and we did have to contract out the larger trees. Sadly, most of the larger trees are gone. And the, the last thousand or so trees, about 1,100 trees, our crews can handle. So you won't have that contractual services costs and that'll save money. It's fortunate that we were able to replace about 2,500 trees at this point. And we're not to the 5,000 trees, that ash trees that we had before as far as replacement is concerned. But we'll continue to report back to the board. I think there's, there'll be a nice opportunity to do a fall planting with some oaks and other, or spring planting with some oaks and other trees that are more conducive to spring planting. And then do another fall planting program in the future. But that, that number will continue to come down in the next two, three years.
So within your packet, as Alan mentioned, is the summary for the Capital Improvement Fund along with the detail that Alan's just gone over. I think, like he said, he's hit most of the highlights on the revenue side. You'll see consistent conservative approaches within the, the state of Illinois, home rule sales tax as well as utility tax and all the other items that are listed in there. And again, halfway, a little more than halfway down the page, you'll see the reference to the 3.5 million dollars in grants. And then the expenditures start on page three. So with that, if there's questions that the board has, we can go through that and be happy to answer those.
This will be the time, Mr. Orver.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Yeah, it was really regarding the streets and the roadway improvements. So we had the strategic plan and then we're going to have the, like, the second phase of that coming in April. So as ideas come out of those types of meetings, how do we get it kind of into action or into the budget at some point? Is that for future budgets? Is it still possible to put something in for next year for things that are coming or do we have to wait the following year? How does that process kind of work?
Those are very good questions. It also, as well, we have to, we will get the PCI that gets done on our roads as well too, which will help to drive what improvements that we do make. A large portion of what is prepared in the capital budget for this year is to continue the work of the existing strategic plan so that we, we do have our goals and objectives pretty much from the existing plan, which was to put money into maintaining our existing road network to, and to improve the pathway network and the like. So that's where you see a lot of those priorities put as well as to replacing the ash trees. So we do continue to work toward that end in this. However, you know, depending on the outcome of those conversations, there is some flexibility, of course. Not everything's out on the streets currently for bid. So we do have some flexibility after the, after that strategic planning session goes, that if there are some changes that you want to make within this document, by all means, we can do that.
Certainly for, for next year, I guess, would be the big time, right?
The bigger direction would be for the next fiscal year. Exactly right.
Thank you.
You've been very conservative in your state income tax. You dropped it 20 percent.
Yes.
If that turns out not to materialize, that money could be available instantly, if you will.
Certainly, there is room. As has been our practice the last few years is that we have, well, we have been budgeting conservatively, not only waiting for an issue from the state, but just generally in speaking. And has been pointed out, we tend to run about a six percent gap. And so as a result, that's, that's where we've been able to essentially set aside the funds to get our capital account back into good shape. As you recall, it was at one time 12 million dollars in the hole. We actually had to put together a 12-year plan to get out of that hole. We, it, it took us a lot less than that again because of the leadership that you've given us to, to make those things happen. So to that point, yes, we, we will have some room if that's something you want to explore after the, after the strategic planning session is completed, to have those kind of conversations.
I guess I'll just, I understand, I'll just reiterate it as long as I have a microphone. So, I mean, my important part of this going forward is trying to come up with ideas and solutions to try to help, you know, the commuters that deal with the traffic all the time. And I know there's a lot of great stuff on here, but if you, as we go through it, a lot of it's needed because it's maintenance or it's upgrades and those kinds of things. So I don't know if it's next, necessarily going to address the commuter time and the backups and the road, you know, congestion and all that kind of stuff. So that's the reason, I guess, I was asking. The other question I had was, I thought we had talked about and I'm probably incorrect, but I'll ask. So you have some costs for the engineering, for the traffic controls. Were we not changing out some of those temporary ones this year that would cost more than just the engineering on those or no? So we have temporary lights, I think, at some intersections, don't we?
Yes. There, there is more money in engineering and some more money in miscellaneous engineering if there were, as Administrator Murphy had stated, that if there are things that come up in the strategic plan that the board would like to tackle and start as soon as possible, there's some flexibility in that too as well. There are a few, well, there's one temporary traffic signal that really sticks out in my mind and that's Hundred and Forty-Third Street and Thirty. And this project is actually, we've had several discussions with IDOT, but it's going to be a partnership with IDOT, not only for the construction, but also property acquisition, just because of the, the need and the magnitude of the scale of the project. And that, you know, they do have ownership in the two larger legs of that intersection. So it's important to follow that process so that we get a major funding source to help us out through that. So it is programmed within their project. It just, you know, we, it's not going to happen this year.
So we're just getting started. So we have the plan, it's just not going to, the lights aren't actually going to change out this year?
No, not at that intersection. And, you know, it's best to continue to work with IDOT on that project to get it done because, again, funding, funding is the key on that one.
Sure. Hey, I'm sorry. Did you, just one other question. I think it, it shows up here and I'm just trying to understand. So I think the, the red light fines, and then I thought there was a, a red light expense. And it seems, you know, I'm sure that for some people the red light is a sore subject. I know the chief supports it. I know we've had some of this conversation before, but I was just trying to understand. Is, is the cost of us having that in place, I'm looking at this, so contractual services for red light cameras, it looks like the expense is almost fifty percent of what the revenue is. Does that sound about right?
Actually, no, that doesn't. The red light fines are about 150,000 and our expenses are about 110,000 for that service. So really, it's about net neutral for us. We use it more as a, as a source for controlling accidents at that particular intersection. We've actually seen about a, if I remember correctly, about a thirty percent, a little bit less than thirty percent reduction.
About 22 percent, actually.
Oh, it's 22 percent reduction in crashes at that intersection as a result of having that in place. There was another one that was at Renwick and Route Thirty. That's out of commission with the construction. As I understand, we would have to go back to the state and get approvals to reinstall that. However, more than likely, it wouldn't meet the conditions precedent to have that put back in place. So following construction, actually moving forward, we, we just have the one.
Oh, I'm sorry. So we might be eliminating one of the red light cameras in the village?
Not might. It's been eliminated.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So I guess the others, when I hear that, so the other side of that is, obviously, the 22 percent, it's, it has value to being there to, for the safety. But then the other side of it is the revenue. I mean, is there a way for us to be able to keep more of that revenue than we are? I mean, can we buy our own equipment instead of having to contract it out? I'm just asking.
Actually, it is by, as I understand the law, it is something we contract out with this, with this company. There were three different companies that bid on the process at the time. As I understand, one of them has gone bankrupt. The company that we contracted with has since been purchased out by another company. And so realistically, there are just two vendors in the state of Illinois at this point, as I understand.
Oh, and it's a current contract?
Oh, you know, that's a great question. As I recall, we, we brought that back forward to the board this time last year.
Maybe two years ago.
Two years ago. There, there, because there was a change in the service that they had to change out the equipment. And we have a, it was a five-year agreement at the time that we had to make that change.
We do that this summer.
Okay, it was this past summer, yeah. So it's just a year old. So we have another four years left on the agreement.
But I will say it's a fixed amount that we pay the contractor and they don't get a hundred percent of that fixed cost if the offenses aren't there in revenues. So there's a tracking mechanism where we report back and forth between the company and ourselves. So their costs are flat regardless. The offenses is what drives really the revenue on our end. So the good news is, is there's less offenses potentially because it's doing what it's supposed to do. And again, if the offenses are reduced to even zero, just as an example, we would not pay the contractor a fee for the service for the month. So it goes month to month.
The actual violators, does the police department have a person in there that monitors that and decides which, which violation, is it an actual violation versus not before the citation is done?
There's actually several, several layers. When there's a potential violation, the company will send us that information. So they're reviewing it first. And then once we get that information, a member of our traffic unit will review it again. And at that point, if they feel it's still a violation, then a notice will be sent to the person. And then that person still has a opportunity to appeal that to an adjudicate, adjudication judge. So there's actually three levels that person could go through before the citation or the violation is either true or false. But the company reviews it first and then we do review it second before a notice even goes out to the person, to the potential violator.
And our review process, are the salaries that are done by the officers, his or her salary that's reviewing this, are those included in this cost or are they just included in the general cost?
Just in the general cost.
So the actual monies the village is seeing is less than being reported because the salaries are being used when they could be used elsewhere?
For the amount of time that they're reviewing the citations.
Correct.
Yep.
I think, Chief, isn't there just another stage too? I mean, if they can actually go to the circuit court, the traffic court, if they don't like the adjudication judge, I think, if I'm not mistaken.
Not a hundred percent sure on that.
Okay, well, I might be misspeaking, but someone seemed to tell me that a while back too, so.
I would also assume, hopefully I'm right here, there would be some other payroll involved in, in handling the legal side of it as well. And, you know, as far as the adjudication, the hearing and everything else with our legal counsel and staff. Correct?
Correct.
So that drops it by even more?
So to your point, it drops it more. I, I guess that just begs the next question.
Why?
Are we looking at expanding this program and getting any more of these? And if we are, will the board be advised and have a vote on it?
Actually, at this, yeah, well, first off, no, we, we don't see that happening. But if it, if it is something that we're, there was a change in direction, that is something that would come before you for sure. Also, we do have to go through a vetting process with the state of Illinois and IDOT as to where those locations could be. Because again, you have to have a certain threshold of traffic count for it to even be considered and, and other details as well.
And we, we received a presentation one time at the coffee with the mayor of which they were reviewed. And if you could see how close a lot of the accidents happened with some of these people running that light. Some of them, there was no crash, but there certainly could have been.
Absolutely. And we've actually caught crashes on film, but as the mayor mentioned, there's many, many close calls where the person swerves out of the way to miss the person that's in the intersection. But as I, as, as mentioned, we have captured many crashes on, on video as well.
A very effective program as part of the decision triumph in the first place. And we thought we put in controls such that it'd be fair. And I think, you know, there's, nobody's getting a fine for turning right on a red light.
Absolutely.
You review them all. The only complaint I've ever heard directly presented to me versus somebody went through the light, they didn't want to pay it, but they didn't say they didn't, they didn't do it. So I think whatever you're doing has been very effective and I think the safety reduction is significant. And I go through one of those intersections all the time and, you know, I'm happy I don't get branched.
Are there any other questions on the capital budget?
The only other thing that I had and, and I'm, I apologize if it's not under the capital, but I don't know if there's room for it. I had spoken to Chief a while back. I don't know if you remember, but there was some incident in the, one of the local parks here about some juveniles being assaulted, I guess.
That, I'm familiar with, I believe the one you're speaking of was up in the Walkers Grove area.
Correct. And I think we had talked briefly that you have some cameras in some of the parks. And in order to expand that program, you would need obviously more funds to do that. So I was just curious if the board had ever considered it or ever thought about it or what their thoughts might be on expanding a program. Would, it would be basically cameras in some more of our local parks for added security.
Wouldn't that be a partnership with the park district itself? Was, should do something like that?
I think we're, I think Chiefs, I think we're ultimately responsible for policing the parks if it's in our city, correct?
We, yes, we are. If it's in the village limits, we did, really, the only parks that are covered right now are directly behind the Settlers Park and the riverfront park area. We have approached the park district in the past about increasing cameras in some of the other parks and for a variety of reasons that, that didn't really move forward. But we're always exploring new ways to, you know, monitor these parks. Obviously, our manpower is limited to monitor the parks 24/7 with humans. Cameras would allow us to expand that, that potential. But we are always exploring new, new ways to increase our technology as far as keeping those parks safe.
I guess where I'm at with it is, you know, that the parks, the asset belongs to the park district and we are contracted through an intergovernmental agreement to, you know, protect those parks. So essentially, a conversation, I think, between So, essentially, a conversation, I think, between staff and the park district, sounds like it's already taken place as far as if the park district does want to, you know, install additional cameras. My opinion, that responsibility would fall on the park district to install those cameras in said parks unless the board here were to decide we want to actually put money aside in our capital budget and get permission from the park district to install cameras on their parks.
Just want to remind the board too, there's a number of parks that we have in this area, and so, and it's...
But didn't at one point the park district pay for, like the schools, for taking care of the policing of those? And they decided they didn't want to do that, so it left up to us to decide how we should police the parks?
Years ago, we did have a contract with the park district where we provided an officer at, at one point, I believe we even had two officers working the parks that would patrol the parks in the village, and we actually had a contract that we were patrolling the parks outside the village, so everything that was within the Plainfield Park District jurisdiction. When the economy took a downturn, downturn, we did reevaluate that arrangement, and both parties mutually agreed that it may be in our best interest not to continue that. And that was, I want to say, at least seven, eight years ago that we moved away from that agreement.
Yeah, it's been changed since I've been on the board, so that's probably about that range, so.
Camera technology is very expensive to get something decent that you're going to actually be able to see who people are. I mean, there's great advances, but it comes with a cost. And to your point, there are a lot of parks, and where do you start? You know, I want my neighborhood, I want my neighborhood, you know, it's going to be just very difficult to put that kind of camera technology in the parks.
Absolutely.
I agree.
Not to mention the servers to save all that information and data for...
You're absolutely right. It's not just the cameras you see out there, it's everything behind the scenes, absolutely.
Are there any other questions?
I guess I have to ask the follow-up question to that. So, if it's okay for Settlers Park, how come it's not okay for other parks?
Well, again, Settlers Park is the only park that the village of Plainfield directly controls. Settlers Park and Riverfront Park, those are the only two parks that are physically under our control. The other parks are under the jurisdiction of the park district, and so, that's the point of view that's being raised here.
We have a responsibility to police those, correct?
But again, if I can, on this particular park out here, largely why we had that camera installed was that we had break-ins at the concession stand. So, it was more a deterrent for activities that were occurring at our, at our concession stand than it was to be a safeguard for visitors and guests using the park.
And if I may add, with the location of these two parks being so close to the village hall, it drove down our cost because some of the infrastructure was already here. And I'm not going to get into the IT part of it because I will absolutely butcher it, but it really drove the cost down by the location of the parks. We did, as I mentioned, we did look at other parks in the core, if you will, of the village, and because of the location and line of sight issues, things like that, that was starting to drive the cost up. So, that's primarily, besides what Administrator Murphy had mentioned, that was the other reason why we chose these two parks as our locations.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Just a general comment, the budget as a whole is, you know, we did it in pieces, but it's outstanding, it's balanced, it's conservative. The last several years have been excellent, and this is no exception. It's very well done, and so, thank everybody for all the effort they put into it, which is a lot, I know, but it really hangs together well. And you go through it, yeah, it's all well thought out, it's there, so.
I agree with Trustee Lamb, there's, again, like I said earlier, there's a lot of work that all of our department has, you know, put into this with their staff and bring everything to Administrator and prioritize, and it's recognized, and thank you very much for all the hard work.
I know I ask a lot of questions, and I appreciate everyone's time and patience because that's, you know, I'm learning. So, hopefully, as the, as the time goes on, I won't have as many questions. So, thank you.
I hope you do. Seriously, good questions.
I enjoy your questions, Ed.
Good questions.
One last number to...
And great work on all this. It's just great work for, for all the hard work that goes into this, all the multiple departments getting grants and all the things that you do for the citizens, you know, we roll along and everything is, you know, just wonderful. And we're moving along very well in the village, and that speaks volumes of the staff because it's your work, your work every day, so thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Well, before we let you go though, there is one last piece we do need to hit on, and that is our financial policies that are included in your packet. They are the same financial policies that are in place currently. We aren't making any recommendations to change them for this upcoming year. There are a few items that Tracy and I want to explore for next year, but they aren't terribly substantive. They're only things that actuaries, accountants, and financial advisors get excited about. But still, nevertheless, they are some details that we want to work on for next year most likely, unless there is some interest in having some further conversation in any one particular area. Be happy to have Tracy speak to the details.
Sure, and for just a bit of background, most of these policies have been in place for quite some time, albeit they've been amended from various years. Back in two thousand and ten, we decided to take all the policies and compile them into one document, which is why you see the initial adoption date of February first of two thousand and ten. It made some sense to put them in one central document so we can have a, one place to look for the policy. So, that's why you see the various dates. As part of the policy itself, it's to be reviewed on an annual basis, and staff felt it was appropriate to do during the budget time. That doesn't mean that staff isn't looking at this on an ongoing basis, it just means the board has an opportunity to take a look at the policy as it stands and offer any comments or questions or suggestions for improvement. The last time we updated it, I believe it had to do with the GASB pronouncement that we had to implement some new language within the policy itself. I have not heard anything to date relating to auditor or any sort of other updates from GASB pronouncements as an example. But as Administrator Murphy mentioned, there are a couple areas that I'd like to just clean up a little bit as it relates to language. Nothing that is compromising anything within the village itself. I'd like to actually add some language. One I'm contemplating is within, like a pension funding policy as an example, something that we know that we, as a board, has, have been given direction of funding at a hundred percent. It's not necessarily written in a policy, that's something I'd like to probably incorporate, but it's not withholding or tying us down as a village right now without having it written in a documented form. So, those are the types of things that I'll be looking at within the next year. But again, we like to bring this in front of the board so that the opportunity is there for the board to look at, ask questions, and also, if there's any areas that, you know, the board is interested in expanding, we can do that. It will become part of the budget document, but it can always be amended at any point in time of the year.
Now, as I've said before, it's an outstanding document. I really wish every organization would adopt something like this because it's a great guideline that tells you what to do and how to do it safely and what your priorities are and all that sort of stuff. I have only one question though. You're the investment officer. Protecting our village funds is, you know, safety of that and liquidity are most important things, and yield is third. Do we invest any of our monies outside of CDs and checking accounts?
We have certain bonds that you'll see within the investment report that comes to the board monthly that we have begun to look at and invest in. The current policy states that the village should invest in two-year or less maturities unless it's tied to an expense stream in the future. As an example, we have a reserve fund in the water and sewer budget that is right around three million. It's for future improvements within the system. We can look at that and say that we can invest in those funds a little bit more longer term because of that purpose. So, that's just one example. We are working with, or I am working with someone who actually helps with the cash flow analysis, looks at, from a two-year perspective, how much cash on hand should be within the village, so there's no concern of cash availability, and it also adds a conservative approach to it as well. So, we've been working to, your point, you'll see additional CDs within the investment report. We're laddering a lot of those CDs, keeping it a little bit more flexible as it relates to when they mature every six months, so we have availability if funds are necessary. For a longer-term perspective, I think we're getting closer to a point where the comfort level is there on some of the fund balances that the village has, or we can maybe look at a longer-term approach. That's one of the areas within the investment policy I'd like to look into, to see, to ensure that we have maybe language that allows the village to look at various different maturity levels, meaning year, two-year, possibly three to five years if it's appropriate. So, I want to look at some of that and look at past practice as far as other municipalities to see what's out there. But to your point, primarily CDs, a couple municipal bonds. We've bought, the Plainfield School District, I believe, had a bond that we had purchased recently within the last year. Those are all on the investment report, which is provided to the board on a monthly basis as well. So, if there's any questions on those, I'd be happy to answer those along the way. If you see something different within the report, you know, you can feel free to reach out.
There are also some pooled funds that we also participate in that provide us with some additional opportunities for investment.
Yeah, the reason I asked the question is I'm familiar with Orange County in California where the guy lost two billion dollars because he kept trying to recoup the money he lost and end up with, and so, we're not taking those kind of risks at all, as near as I can tell. It's all relatively readily available cash, and we're being conservative about it, which is the point I wanted to get across. The only other question I had is, I know the general fund has more than a twenty-five percent reserve, but it also specifies in here the water fund should have that. Do we have, I don't, I don't see that number usually, so do we have more than twenty-five percent of the waterfront water expenditures in cash, or?
Yeah, not necessarily is, is where we'd like to see it from a staff perspective. We're trying to build that reserve up a little bit more.
Okay, I just, it's in there, I just don't see that number, so I wasn't sure where we stood in that one, so.
Right. And if you take depreciation into it, probably not very close, so.
Going off what Trustee Lamb said, I'm glad it doesn't have a provision in there to take all of our funds to Vegas and bet all on red. But on a serious note, you had mentioned that there is a two-year or less maturity right now. Is that essentially to establish liquidity and be able to grab that, and to be able to pull that, that funding out then and have it available within the two-year period? I guess when you do the comparison, if you're looking to extend it for, you know, for three years, I'd like to see what the opportunity is and how much more of a gain that we can recognize doing that than, like you said, maybe examples of our municipalities that are exercising that type of an investment. But I'm definitely interested in seeing that.
And interest rates have not been great. They're starting to get better, but even some of the one-years, if they're over a percent, you're lucky. So, when we did do something that's over two years, it's, you know, maybe two percent, three percent. I'd have to look back.
I agree with Trustee. Beck, I'd like to see your ideas on the three years, and if you ladder them right, it's the same, they expire every six months, it's just the initial...
Three years. Right, you're right.
One last question, Tracy. As far as that, that goes, what I also want to see is if we do make that change to our policy, maybe Brian also can chime in or at a later date, if that will affect our bond rating at all, our credit rating, if we do change that policy, if not, totally moot.
I mean, they do, they do look at liquid available funds, so it really depends on what your fund balances are and your availability of your cash. So, that's one reason why that, that particular topic hasn't been approached. And when we do look at things like that, it's a small dollar amount based on what's available and what we're comfortable with and having in cash flow, and usually, it remains more conservative than anything. The other thing I think that's been asked in the past, and since I looked it up and calculated it, I figured I'd let the board know, we have, you know, we have a debt policy within the financial policies. The village is not bound to a debt limit. You'll see that within the documentations that we have. But there is for non-home rule communities, the debt limit is eight-point-six-two-five percent of EAV. For the village, that equates to about a hundred and one million in outstanding debt that the village could have had we been bound to that debt limit. We're currently just over four percent, based on the last audit, four and a half percent. I would anticipate being a little bit less. We've had some debt come off the books as well, and our EAV is probably going to be a little higher once we get those numbers. So, I would say in general, it's between four or four and a half percent at this point in time. So, I know that's been asked a few times, I hadn't had the numbers ready, I figured I'd share that as well.
Alan and Scott just started licking their lips over the idea that we could issue more debt. No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding.
Policy is written very well, and I'm going to make sure there's nice, strong language in regards to debt issuance.
Choking aside, yeah.
I think it's very detailed and encompassing, so thank you very much for that. You had asked about expanding it, and I guess I would just want to throw out if it made any sense to add a policy regarding the disposition of assets, I guess specifically excess real estate. So, I know we've looked at selling property in the past, and I don't know that we actually have a policy that we've kind of followed to do that.
We can explore that. Thank you.
And as listed on the memo, the, the next time staff had planned to bring the budget document back was March twenty-first, where the public hearing will happen. At that point, pending any public comments at the public hearing, typically, the board looks to adopt the budget on the same evening if that's the pleasure of the board. So, hearing nothing tonight that would warrant major changes within the budget documents, staff will move forward to publishing for the public hearing and having possible adoption on the March twenty-first date.
Thank you all very much for your input tonight and feedback, and to Tracy and all the fine men sitting next to her for helping put this all together, and for the board for your direction and guidance over the previous ten meetings as we've been reviewing this. It is kind of interesting to think that we spend about half of our committee, the whole meetings for the year, working on the budget, which shows how important this is to you as a board and how important it is to us as an organization that we, we, we bring this document to life and actually continue to work on it throughout the entire year and make sure that we serve our residents well. Thank you.
Thank you. Reminders?
March first to be at the Planning Commission meeting, March seventh would be our next village board meeting, March ninth is coffee with the mayor, March tenth is the Historic Preservation Commission, and March fourteenth will be our next committee of a whole.
We're seeking motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, that motion carries.